Good evening, everyone. We're reconvening after a closed session. At this time, can we please have roll call?
Trustee Hodges.
Present.
Trustee Flores.
Present.
Trustee Young is absent. Vice President Amboy.
Present.
President Fox.
Present.
Trustee Jacobo.
Present.
Trustee Arbob.
Present.
And trustee De Leon.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Now, the Pledge of Allegiance. Our reports taken in closed session. We had our superintendent's evaluation that we reviewed and direction was given. With that, we are down to five D adoption of the board agenda. Do I hear a motion? Vice President Amboy.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda?
Trustee Flores.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent. Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arbob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
And a motion passes for yes with one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item six, Board Presentations, Resolutions?
Yes, so there's no six A item. Going down to six B, we have our resolution to adopt number five zero eight, five zero eight one, recognizing October twenty twenty five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Do I have a trustee who would like to read? All right, trustee Jacobo. Saw that hand first. Sorry, trustee Hodges.
Sorry, guys. This is a really personal topic for me. I can't find it on my end, but I'm just reading off the screen. Okay. Recognition October twenty twenty five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for one in eight women in the United States. With three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty new cases and two thousand eight hundred new cases of invasive breast cancer for men expected to be diagnosed in women in twenty twenty five. And whereas breast cancer remains the second leading cause of cancer death among American women. There are currently over four million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas breast cancer incidences, incidence rates in the U.S. began decreasing in the year two thousand after increasing for the previous two decades. Researchers, scientists, numerous nonprofit organizations, and breast cancer survivors are dedicated to discover the cure for breast cancer. Mammography and X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And now, therefore, be it resolved, we hereby recognize October twenty twenty five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all Americans to learn the facts about breast cancer and invest in the healthy future with the medical exams and regular breast cancer screenings. The foregoing resolution adopted at a regular meeting of the Vallejo City Unified School District Board of Education on the first day of October of twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Go ahead. So how do I do it?
Yes, you can.
How do I do it again?
You'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Trustee Hodges.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent. Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arbob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
And a motion passes for yes with one absent.
Thank you so much, and thank you for reading the resolution. I think, like you said, is something personal, and I think we all know, at least I know, family members have gone through high stages of breast cancer and hopefully will continue to stay. All right, so we all know people, this happens, and I think prevention and awareness is the key. With that, we are now on to Resolution five zero eight three.
Yeah, I think we've asked trustee Amboy, Vice President Amboy, to read this resolution?
Thank you. Recognizing October twenty twenty five as Filipino-American History Month. Theme, from Colos to Communities, Filipino-Americans Migration and Movement. Whereas the twenty twenty five Filipino-American Heritage Month theme theme continues to focus on migration and movement. Community organization, movement of justice and inspiration for the future. October eighteenth fifteen eighty seven is the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the continental United States as the first La Zonis Indios in Morro Bay, California. The first large wave of Filipino immigration began to work as farmworkers in California and the Mare Island workforce, all of which set in motion the economic, cultural, social, and other contributions that Filipino-Americans have made to our great nation. And whereas the Filipino presence in Vallejo dates back over one hundred years, starting with the nannies and servants of U.S. naval officers stationed at Mare Island after the Philippine-American War. Filipino-Americans comprise a large workforce sector at Mare Island Naval Shipyard, contributing to the defense, economy, growth, and history of Vallejo. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, multi-year trend, Filipino-Americans continue to grow, and they remain the largest Asian-American Pacific Islander group in Solano County, the second largest in California, and the third largest in the nation. And whereas the city of Vallejo and the communities in Solano County have long recognized the contributions of Filipino-Americans, several of whom have dedicated many years of service as leaders with the various groups and private entities. Local school boards, health, and social workers, civil servants, military members, elected public officials, policymakers, and whereas efforts should continue to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture as mandated in the mission statement of the Filipino-American National Historical Society because the roles of Filipino-Americans and other people of color have been overlooked in the writing, teaching, and learning of the United States' history. Therefore, be it resolved, governing board of Vallejo City Unified School District do hereby designate October twenty five as Filipino-American History Month. And I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution fifty eighty-three.
Trustee Flores.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent. Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arbob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
The motion passes for yes with one absent.
Thank you. Down to forum, inter-agencies.
Inter-agencies in the room?
All right, VEA.
Good evening, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, all of our trustees, superintendent. Not really a whole lot to report. All of our certificated staff are hard at work doing what they do best. We've got a lot of phenomenal, outstanding talent working here in Vallejo. The, as you can imagine, the biggest overarching stressor is the schools who are on the closure list. And the teachers are, not just teachers, but all the staff are trying every, they're doing everything they can to make sure it's going to be a normal year for the students. But that's still a whole nother layer of stress. So, thank you.
Thank you. CSEA. I have someone from CSEA. All right, what about VSM? Okay. District Advisory Committees.
So I just, not a full report, but I do want to recognize that we did hold our first Superintendent Student Advisory Committee this past Monday. And in that committee, we've established some co-chairs among the students and representatives that will be coming to future board meetings to report out, as well as representatives that will be working with one of our student trustees to represent them at the two by two. All those were selected.
Thank you. Now we're down to our community members.
So we do have three cards. I'm going to call them in order. So the first is Soraya Aguilar. You're up, Soraya. You're going to want to move the microphone down so it's right at your, how you doing, Mr. Aguilar? It's good to see you. Got this.
Okay. My dad made me speak today and...
Speak into the mic so we can hear you nice and clear.
I was just talking about, and Hogan, there's this guy with the, he's like in Ms. Bellby's class, and Hogan. And he like wears these tight pants, and like everyone talks about like how he should like change his pants, but he like won't do it, and he'll just like laugh and like act like we're not, act like we're not saying anything. Or, or how I got like stabbed in Hogan, and no one really said anything neither. And yeah, that's all I really wanted to say.
Good, thank you. The next card, is it Matthew? Matthew, yeah, Aguilar.
How you doing today? So I might have lost for words because the incident my daughter was talking about is a grown male who wears tight, tight skinny jeans. And it's like, bro, for one, my daughter was stabbed there a couple of years ago, and Ms. Jefferson lied, said she took care of the situation, and she didn't even call me. So now she has to go to a school where she's been stabbed at that she's now making in the class where a grown male is showing his genitalia? Or the outlining of it, my bad. Or how about my son still has a little charter when he got kicked in the mouth? Or even my daughter who went to Mare Island Health and Fitness Academy when she was assaulted? I mean, if I remember correctly. They smashed your head on the ground a couple of times, yeah? You telling me my daughter had a concussion and nobody called me? It took the school twenty-four hours to make a ring when they should have phoned home immediately. Now, one fifty, I'm trying to make a quick shot, okay?
However, as you review the most recent embargo test scores, you will see that our students have made significant gains. They are thriving, resilient, and one hundred percent college bound. The, that their growth is a reflection of both their brilliance and the collective e- efforts of our educators, families, and the community. As taxpayers and parents, we believe it is both fair and necessary that students benefit from these state bond funds set aside for public schools. These funds exist to ensure that all children, regardless, regardless of which public school they attend, have access to facilities that support their success. We look forward to continuing the collaborative partnership with the board and the district. By working together with clarity, urgency, and fairness, we can ensure that our students have the opportunities they so gravely deserve with appreciation and determination, the parents of elite public schools. And I just wanna add something. My daughter, who's in TK, she's four years old, um, started off, and we've been in school for about a month and a half, inching into two months now. And she read to me her first book last night. She could not read before she started school. She could not identify all of her letters. She knows her letters. She knows the date. She knows how to write her name. And I have recorded on my phone where my baby read at four years old on her own. And that is just a testament to the love, care, and the consideration that each students at Elite Public Schools gets from their, not only their educators, but it feels like a village of people. Every time I turn around, there's someone there to support. And I had to pull my, my fifth grader out of school last year because he couldn't read. He was on a second grade reading level.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Agar, you had, you had your time, though.
No, I'm sorry, you're out of line. You're out of line. You're out of line. Our next agenda item is student reports. Our student reports, student Jacobo, would you like to start?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sonia Valdez. I am student trustee for Vallejo High School. And I am here bringing my student report. Okay, so first, I would like to highlight attendance week. I would like to highlight attendance week. We all participated. My personal favorite was Thursday, which was Throwback Thursday, where I was able to wear my, my two thousands kind of nineties-inspired outfit, which was super fun to pick out. Um, we had an Instagram post dedicated to that, where we kind of showed off what we wore that whole week and all the activities we did that week. Um, I also wanted to highlight our NWEA achieved over ninety percent completion of English and math for all grade levels included. Um, senior sunrise was this past Friday, as well as the senior trip. Um, it was super great seeing pictures and videos of all of our beloved seniors having fun in Santa Cruz, if I'm correct. Um, what else? CMA started, CMA started this past week on Tues- Tuesday, so we have many students wearing their scrubs and getting ready for this huge and honorable career path. Um, also, senior meetings are starting. Uh, PSAT starts October twenty ninth for all juniors free for Vallejo High School students. Um, SAT will be offered, ACT unfortunately will not be, but they offer support and guidance with your counselors. Um, we also started tutoring, which I have seen few students talking about that. So that is definitely something I would like to highlight. Another thing I would like to highlight would be, like we mentioned, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It is a very personal topic for me. A relative of mine was diagnosed with it, and I was actually her caregiver for some time. So definitely, you see the highlights, you see the ups and downs of it, and by the glory of God, she's still with us to this day and a survivor. So kinda wanted to highlight that, as well as highlight, um, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Um, again, a very personal topic for me. So just kind of hug your loved ones, check in on them. It's not, it's not as rare as people want to make it seem, and it's unfortunately very common to be seen. It's not normal, but it's common. So I kinda just wanna highlight that. And last thing, our rival football game this Saturday with Jesse Bethel. Um, just wanna highlight, it's pink out, so please make sure you show your report. It's not just about the rivalry, it's not just about the game, but also to show up to those who are still with us and to those who are still fighting. Thank you, guys.
Yar Bob from Jesse Bethel.
Good evening, VCU SD community, families, students, and board. Uh, my name is Baroja Yar Bob. I am Jesse Bethel's student trustee and representative. Um, I'd like to start off and piggyback off, uh, what, um, Sophie mentioned about the, uh, rivalry, uh, game. Obviously, the game is a rivalry. It's the super, uh, Superintendent's Cup, so it's a cool thing, you know, I think last year our JV team won, so go Jags. Um, but I think much, much more important even than the game is, like Sophie mentioned, the breast cancer awareness. And, uh, Jesse Bethel has always been really involved in breast cancer awareness. Uh, we have clubs like her club. I'll give a couple shout outs, uh, throughout my report to some of the clubs at Jesse Bethel. So her club, uh, doing a lot of things for breast cancer awareness. Today, we actually had an activity in the quad for breast cancer awareness. We've done things like that in the past with the pink outs at football games, and hopefully we'll see a lot of pink at the football game on Saturday. Um, I know I'll be going to the varsity game, so let's hope Bethel wins. Couple updates about, couple updates about the ongoings at Jesse Bethel. We were also recently informed of the fact that the PSAT would be paid for in full this year for all our juniors, which, uh, the juniors were really happy about, and it was great that, um, the, the district is paying for that, the schools are paying for that. And, uh, everyone's really excited because it's a great opportunity to get to be prepared for the SAT. And not, or, and not only that, you also get opportunities and access to scholarships if you, um, perform well enough. And now, I know a lot of students, uh, I personally know are r- really looking forward to it and, uh, their test scores. Um, we have Hoco Soon, Homecoming, and we're gonna have our Homecoming Spirit Week soon as well, which is, um, gonna be really exciting. We've got a lot of exciting stuff planned in leadership for that. Um, recently, a couple weeks, about, weeks ago, we had a tennis field trip. Our tennis, uh, team, uh, boys and girls, uh, went to, uh, the Laver Cup, and they, they got to see a lot of awesome, uh, tennis players, which was really cool. And that's a great opportunity for the students to get to go to an event like that, because so many big names. And the fact that we can offer that to people in Vallejo, to students in VCU SD is a really cool thing. Um, and I'll, I'll give a couple more shout outs. We have clubs like the Jesse Bethel Tutoring Club, which is really helping students, um, get more support in classes where they may need it. Um, and, you know, clubs are in full, full gear now at Jesse Bethel. We've got clubs like Future Medical Professionals, um, that are gonna soon be teaching people about the medical field, different pathways in the medical field. Uh, there's another club like Career Exploration Club, which will have guest speakers coming in to teach the students about different fields. So it's all really cool stuff at Bethel, so really excited for the coming few weeks. That's my report.
Thank you for your report. Let's hear from John Finney, trustee De Leon.
Sorry, um, good eve- good evening, everyone. This week, my student report was kind of late because I was sick for the, um, beginning of the week, so by the end of, or by now, I'm, I've just been catching up on work. Um, but a few things, um, our progress reports came out the end of last week, I wanna say. Um, and all of our teachers saw a rise in grades, um, from all of their students. We have a good amount of kids that are actually graduating this first quarter. Um, our seventh period also started this week, so our support period. And they, our school's been good at, um, making sure that kids are going and, making sure that they have that support that they need, um, starting at the beginning of the school year. Um, like the superintendent said, we had our first superintendent student advisory meeting. That was, it was fun to be back. It was a fun meeting. And then, like Sophie said, we have the Battle of Vallejo. That's what I call it, the Battle of Vallejo Game. Um, not only about breast cancer awareness, or, you know, the rivalry, rivalry between the two games, but a lot of our alumni like to call it the alumni game. Um, that's where we have all of our alumni come out, and we showcase all of the high schools s- starting from before we were even thought of. So Hogan, Bethel Peoples, St. Pat's in Vallejo, um, who are asking all of you guys to come out and represent your school, whatever school it was at the time. Um, they're holding at halftime relay races, took a war in different games, so come in your school gear. Um, also, the CMA program started at Vallejo, which we have a few kids at, um, our sc- or at John Finney attending. So, um, from what I know, they've had fun, and they were really interested in the program and thankful for the opportunity that we were able to attend. Um, and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your report. At this time, we are now down to consent items. I'd like to pull one item.
Thank you.
Um, we need to pull item eight B. Do we have a motion for the consent items eight A through J, um, with taking, pulling eight B. Trustee Flores.
I'd also like to pull eight D, as in dog, for discussion.
For discussion. Eight B, though, we're just pulling it all together.
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, we approve, uh, consent items eight, A through J with removal of B and pulling D for discussion.
You hear a second? Trustee Hodges.
Second.
Roll call, please. Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent. Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo is absent. Trustee Yar Bob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
And the motion passes with four yes and one absent.
And a, uh, Assistant Superintendent De Posse to come up, uh, since this is her item, um, item eight D, which is a, a contract between VCU SD and Victory Outreach. And, uh, trustee Flores, you have questions, or do you wanna just, uh, how, how do you wanna approach it?
Well, I, I think just kind of first talking about the reason for pulling it. I know that last year, I believe we had a contract similar amount with them, and, you know, one thing that I, I think we're all trying to be more cognizant of are these programs we use year in, year out. But what, what is the, are we getting what we're paying for, so to speak? And, um, I just wanted to know what the implementation and effectiveness uh, goals were from last year.
Right.
Were they achieved? Um, i- i- if so, great, you know, let, let's continue. But if not, or, or if we need more time to get that information, either from, from the district, from the program itself, I'd like to table this and, and, um, and maybe vote on it at the next meeting, wh- once we get that information.
So, do you, uh, is there more? Sorry.
Uh, just, um, I, I think that's just the main thing, just trying to get information on, on the effectiveness of the program from prior years.
So this, this particular contract is to provide mentorship and, um, gain, um, abatement, like to, to, um, reverse some trends in that area. Um, data that I have available to you is, is more qualitative in terms of student-reported, um, uh, efficacy. Um, the interventions, um, are around building pro-social skills and reducing the, um, incidence of, um, uh, suspension or, uh, violence on campus and things like that. Um, from a qualitative standpoint, the Victory Outreach staff did provide some data around personal efficacy and growth and ability to, um, avoid incidents of violence. Um, and that's really what it's about. It's not about, um, uh, it's, it's not about any particular, um, we may not see a one-to-one correlation always in terms of, in, in terms of how mentorship programs work. But, um, there should be an outcome where there's avoidance of, of violent behavior or antisocial behavior on campus and a growth of pro-social behavior. So, uh, where, I, I've been in communication with them since we received this contract, um, and emphasizing that while they were able to provide qualitative data last year, student survey data, on how they felt about participating in the program, which was by and large very positive in terms of their personal growth. I have emphasized to them that this year, students that participate will be monitoring their absenteeism rates, monitoring their academic growth rates, and their reduction in, um, incidence of, um, assertive discipline, particularly incidents that result in suspension. Um, Ms. Marshall and I have been in conversation about this, and she will be monitoring monthly the data for the students who participate. Um, so we, that's easy data for her to pull, to monitor the effectiveness. And the, um, staff at Victory Outreach are, um, ha- I have shared all of the expectations of metrics that are related to student outcomes in those three areas, um, that they should be focusing on. Um, included in that is a reduction in, um, students who, um, have, have grades lower than a C, for instance. So the implementation and effectiveness targets that are attached to the, um, agenda item have also been reviewed with that team, with the understanding that, um, that we will be monitoring this on a monthly basis for effectiveness. Um, so that in combination with the qualitative data that they shared with me as a result of last year, um, and the staff saying this has made a positive impact on the students who participate, um, is why we brought it forward this time.
So, so I think that's where, again, that, that's what I was kind of hoping that I would have been provided, what their, um, of the implementation and effectiveness targets were last year. Are, are we saying that last year they didn't have one? Or, or, because I'm, I'm sure everybody that's involved in it is having a positive reaction to it. But for example, in this year, you know, they talked about the students will experience fifteen percent decrease in, uh, in suspension numbers, fifteen percent increase in attendance. So those are.
Those are specific.
Those are very specific.
Quantitative, yeah.
Exactly.
You can track, right.
But what about last year? What, what did, what did we provide them?
Right.
What, or what, you know?
Um, there would have been implementation targets last year. Um, I don't believe they were as tightly tracked, to, to be fair. Um, but I think we have, with new administration on campus, they're more int- they're more ready to do that, that tracking of the implementation and monitoring of that data. Um, and so with those two things, um, Principal Marshall wants to proceed.
So, were they not monitoring any of that info, any of that so far as attendance?
Victory Outreach?
Yeah.
Um, they may not have been self-monitoring that, because they wouldn't always have access to that data that has to be monitored at the staff level.
And when, when you're saying staff, I mean, I was looking at the, the documents, and the only staff member listed is director, uh, Feather Gonzalez, but who else is?
So when I say staff, I mean VCU SD staff, right? Um, and previously, um, Ms. Marshall didn't have a direct hand in the monitoring of this contract, but she will going forward as the principal. Because this is, this is for work that takes place, um, at Vallejo High School.
I, I, I guess, I, I'm having difficulty seeing spending eighty thousand dollars on a program where we're doing a bulk of the work. And, sure, he is implementing, but we're doing the tracking, we're doing the monitoring, we're doing the reporting.
So it, they, they of course will do their, their tracking and reporting of implementation. How many students they're seeing, to what degree those students are participating. But in terms of outcomes for students, um, and the data, we have access to that, to data that they don't have access to. They don't have access to student attendance and disciplinary data, um, and we have reports to run that would allow us to see that.
So when their implementation effectiveness targets, targets list that they have here, all this, all these things that the program effectiveness targets that they have, you're saying they don't have access to, so they're gonna reach out to you?
Not to me.
Or to, excuse me, to the district, or?
To, at, to their site, to the site principal to run a report on the participating students, right? To, um, review their attendance, their, uh, their, um, assertive discipline and their grades. Is it making an impact?
And, and?
On those three measures, and, yeah.
This is for all schools, correct? Because if I read it correctly, it's.
It's for Jesse Bethel and for, um, Vallejo High. It would be new at Jesse Bethel. Um, so there is, there wouldn't be any, um, any data there. But at Vallejo High School, it has been in a, in, it has been in implementation for the last year.
Is it something that?
Oh, sorry, I see two hands.
Is, is it something that we could, um, ask them to do like a quarterly check-in, just to make sure that?
We absolutely could.
The, uh, the, that is being tracked, because I think it's a little disheartening to hear that last year they didn't.
Now, they, they have program data that they do track. Like I said, they do, they do assessment with the students who participate. And they mon- and they shared that data with me that showed, and it's, but I said it's more qualitative, right? It's not, um, it's not the, the big pieces of data that we are gonna see show up on our dashboard, for instance, right? Um, and so, as, as I mentioned, staff will run monthly reports related to those students. And that's not difficult for us to do, to pull that data, um, and not necessarily share it as much with the team from Victory Outreach, because again, it's, it's, um, it's protected data, right? It's not necessarily things that we share publicly. We don't just share students' grades or students' discipline, right? Uh, without their parents' consent, but we should be looking at that. And to the degree that that did not happen is, um, is remiss on the, you know, on the part of administration. But, but the commitment going forward that it will happen, um, with a plan for it to happen, right? Um, that I can commit to. Trustee De Leon.
You sort of answered my question. I, um, sorry, um, you said that it's gonna be offered at Bethel and Vallejo, so will it be offered at Finney too?
So I know Finney has some specialized programs for, um, mentorship and, um, support. So this, this was specifically for Jesse Bethel and Vallejo High. Um, but if there is a desire to include John Finney on the part of the Finney staff and students, we can look into that. Because I, I know you guys have very specialized, um, supportive services for the smaller groups that you have.
Yeah, I, um, was just thinking, cause hearing like the overview and what the program is itself. I think that a lot of kids in situations like that, that go to Bethel and Vallejo end up being transferred to Finney anyway.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Um, I just think that some of the students can, um, would, what's the word? Yeah, benefit from a program like that. But I also, yeah, that would be a conversation with my principal, because I don't know what programs we do have, so.
Okay, uh, and I can, I can check in with Ms. Whitson.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Yar Bob.
Uh, sorry, I'm just a little unclear. So I'm looking here at the targeted student population by the program. My question would be, if a student is targeted, are they required to join? And on top of that, if, even if they don't m- meet the like, the populace they're looking for, can they still join?
Um, so oftentimes, programs like this will be, um, students will be referred to them. Um, uh, in, in response to behavior or situations that, um, bring a need to light. Um, so I don't know that a, a student would be, um, would not be allowed to participate, but it would be on a case-by-case basis. It's not a club, right? It's, 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 it's a specific targeted service.
The data that we're submitting to Victory that, oh, from where they reach out to these students, that's with consent from the parents.
Always, yes.
Okay, got you. Alright, thank you.
Trustee De Leon, and then I think trustee Flores.
I'm sorry, I forgot a question. Um, do you know, like, because I know at first I thought it was like just at Vallejo, but you said it's at both schools? So would it, would, do you know like when it would be, like, would they be pulled out of class or something like that, or is it after school hours?
Um, I know that staff is on campus. I don't have the schedule committed to memory. Um, but they are present to provide, it, it, it is, it would be intended typically as something that occurs within the school day, because we wanna make sure that it's equitably applied, right? If we say something is after school, that might eliminate students really quickly, right? Because it, then it, and then it becomes very, um, very optional when if it's a, um, supportive social-emotional learning space, um, then we wanna make sure it's available where the students are.
Well, as far as like the mentors and everybody being on campus, so would be, would they be available as often as like our therapists or, um, mental health providers are on campus? Like, would they, if they?
They have a daily presence on campus. I can't speak to exactly what their schedules are.
Okay.
But, yeah, they have a daily presence on campus, like your mental health support provider might, but with a more targeted audience. Mental health support providers, um, generally support a broad range of, um, less intensive needs. Um, and so this would be a very specialized support.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Flores.
I think I might have answered my question, but I just wanted to double check. So, in the contract, it says not to exceed the amount seventy-nine thousand two hundred. And he is billing at fourteen hundred hours of group and enable sessions at forty-eight fifty an hour, sixty-seven thousand nine hundred. So if, because it says that the, the program is designed to reach up to a hundred students, so if he doesn't have the hundred students.
Then he wouldn't bill the full amount.
And so is, is that factored in? It, it's, he's gonna basically be paid hourly, and, and how is that tracked so far as what the hours he?
They, um, uh, staff submit invoices. They have to be reviewed, um, by, you know, this, the staff on site that kind of supervise the work and say, yes, this is the, yes, he met with these kids, he produced these activities. Um, uh, oftentimes, our contract staff sign in. And so if there's any question as to the veracity of the invoices they submit, we can always go back and check on, you know, did these things occur? Do we have evidence that they occurred? Are there logs? Are there student sign-in sheets? That kind of thing to show that, um, the invoices are indeed accurate. Um, and, um, yes, and then it's not to exceed. It doesn't mean it has to reach seventy-nine thousand, but it should, it shall not go over that, right?
It, and, and the question wasn't about, um, figuring out if the hours were accurate or, or, you know, you know, it was more of just how, how was it gonna get tracked? How's it?
Right.
So.
Yeah, they, they have to log that, and, um, and if that is a concern of the board, I certainly can, um, double check the procedure that the sites are gonna use to, the sign in, sign out. How are they tracking how many students are in participating? Do they hold the list? How do they verify that those sessions occurred? Thank you. Thank you. Vice President Amboy.
I believe the, um, the Victory Outreach program is ver- beneficial for both, um, for both Bethel as well as, uh, Vallejo High. Um, my, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve, um, eight, eight D.
I'll make a second. Trustee Yar Bob, did you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, I had a question. So it's saying that the service work location is Vallejo High School, but you mentioned it was for. So it's saying that the service work location is Vallejo High School, but you mentioned it was for Jesse Bethel and Vallejo High School students, right? So does that mean for the Jesse Bethel students, it's online?
No, 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 there there would, I I I'll have to go back and double check, I don't have the actual um. Scope of work in front of me, but I will go back and double check, but no, these are in person services, this are not online services.
So one of the service locations will be in Vallejo High School, another in Bethel?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Thank you, roll call please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent, vice president Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arvob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
The motion passes four yes and one absent.
Thank you, at this time now, we are on agenda item. Information, we do not have anything on nine, so we're on to agenda item ten, action items A. Public hearing adoption of resolution fifty seventy six.
That's me, um resolution fifty seventy six is our um annual resolution for the sufficiency of materials. And we have to open a public hearing, so.
Open up the public hearing, do we have any comments on this? Question?
Okay, so um it's before the board to um adopt the resolution uh fifty seventy six. For the verification of sufficiency of adopted materials.
Vice president Amboy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve um ten A.
Trustee Hodges.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
And trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent, vice president Amboy.
Aye.
And president Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arvob.
Aye.
Trustee De Leon.
Aye, the motion passes four yes and zero and one absent, sorry.
And public hearing is closed now on this item, we are now down to item ten B. Second reading of board policy six one four dot two.
Uh yes, this one, I'm just gonna stand up here for a few more minutes, this um this um. Uh policy six one four, six one four one point two is in recognition of religious beliefs and customs. Um this is relate, this is the second reading of this item related to um recent federal um uh. Supreme Court ruling in Mar- Mahmoud V Taylor. Um CDE has, CDE and um CSBA have provided updates to um sample board policy. To add some language to board policy, um we are um prepared to post to the website. Options for parents um to opt out of um uh content that they feel is. In in conflict with their religious beliefs, um so we have a process now ready to go forward. Um uh and a form, so there's, so that is related to item B.
Vice president Amboy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve action item ten B.
Second. Trustee Flores.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
And trustee Young is absent, vice president Amboy.
Aye.
Trust, president Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Hi.
Trustee Arvob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
The motion passes four yes with one absent.
Thank you, we are now down to item ten C, second read.
Second reading, this is the administrative regulation uh related to the same um uh topic as item B. Um and just further outlines um how we will function to implement um policy six one four one point two.
Thank you, vice president Amboy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve action item ten C.
Trustee Hodges.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent, vice president Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Uh trustee De, I'm sorry, trustee Jacobo.
Hi.
Trustee Arvob.
Aye.
Trustee De Leon.
Hi.
The motion passes four with one absent, thank you.
Thank you. Are now down to ten, action item ten D, approval between, contract between Vallejo's VCUSD and Pioneer Construction.
It's my pleasure to introduce Faleska Ms. Our director of facilities, Bond, and Samantha Bracha, our director of transportation. Um for the next two items, they're both action items, uh both of these action items will be funded by our restricted maintenance account. Which are set, dollars that are satisfied to keep our building safe and functional, repairing roofs, HVAC. Site infrastructure, things of that nature, and their purpose is to preserve and maintain facilities and not to fund salaries or benefits. So that's where those dollars are coming from, and with that, I'd like to introduce Faleska and Samantha, who have been working together to maintain our transportation infrastructure.
Good evening, um superintendent Aurelio, president Fox and trustees. Thank you so much for having us, we have a small little presentation, just to give you guys a little bit of uh background of uh where we're at with, you know, like um. Uh superintendent, uh assistant superintendent uh Fernandez mentioned some work that we've been doing at the transportation yard to make sure that. We are able to provide, continue to provide services to our buses, our vehicles, our our whole fleet. To make sure that students are getting to school safely, and then also our ma- our maintenance workers are. Are um using the facilities in a safe, in a safely way, so I'm gonna go ahead and start our presentation. Um on the first one is like, I wanna go ahead and inform you guys that we are replacing our exi- our existing bus lift. Um it's the one that raises the buses, um the one that we have, we had was in really bad conditions, really old. So we are working to get it replaced, it should be arriving in in the next week and a half, so we're really excited about that. Um we went ahead and did some demolition um and built a new whole um. Concrete pit for the new, to receive the new um bus lift that is coming in. So I'll go ahead and move to the next slide, so you guys can look at what our old bus lift looked like before. Um old, ugly and dark, so now it looks really nice. The next pictures is part of the demolition process, um we had to rip everything out, um. Remove the old lift, do some um soil testing and um. Pretty much remove the whole concrete pad that was existing. So then the next, the next one is what the new lift, where the new lift is gonna go is the new concrete pad, so there you go.
I I do wanna say those that you don't know, that that the old lift, so I've been here over twenty nine years. And the old lift, I know people in transportation that have been there like over thirty five years, so that's, that lift is even older than that. So there was a lot of uh problems with it, just, and this is something that it's not on our agenda, cause you guys already approved it. Um a couple of months ago, but we wanted you to see how it's going and what's happening.
So this was the process, this is the final look, uh you guys saw the some of the um demolition photos. And then this is what it looks like right now, it's ready to receive the new ECO lift that is coming in. Like I said, it should be arriving in the next week, week and a half, and then it'll take about three, four, three to five days to get it installed. It'll be all computerized, it's gonna go ahead, you can go ahead and enter the size of the bus, the the number of the bus. And everything, because all of our fleet is pretty much um numbered, you know, um. By, I think it's, it goes by year of the, what the year of the bus is, and so you enter all that information into that computerized system. And so it adjusted by itself, so it's it's like, it's pretty cool, it's like it moves and adjusts to the size of the bus. And then if we were to ever move location, we can actually remove it and take it with us. It doesn't, it you won't, it won't stay there, you know, you can actually remove it and just create another concrete pad and reinstall it. So it's pretty, it's pretty nice, it's pretty cool, so um that's what we have, and then also one of the other um. Board agenda items that we have also for approval is to um. Repair some of the concrete pad that for the outside, right outside of the uh of the yard, of the mechanical yard. Thing, so we can go ahead and um have our staff be able to move some of the equipment out and move it, because it's like deteriorate it. Because it's so old, so this is to repair some of that concrete and replace it, and then fix some of the asphalt as well. And then also, we have a second item, which is um our our um. Storage building roof that it's in, it's leaking, it's been leaking for a while, and a lot of our equipment and a lot of our um. Tools and stuff are stored in there for our transportation department, and it's in really bad condition, so we are getting the whole roof replaced. So I wanna go ahead and show you some of the existing conditions, and that should be starting in, if we get approved today, it'll be starting the next week. So this is what the interior of the building looks from all the leaks, there's a lot of dry rot, so all that. Repairs and then fully replacement of the roof, it will be happening. So um with that said, um this is where we're at right now, we're really excited. The guys, our mechanics are really excited about using, you know, the new lift and. We're just trying to, you know, improve our facilities for our our staff, and also to make sure that they are safe. Yeah, so that's about it, any questions, if you guys have any questions.
Vice president Amboy.
It's definitely well deserved upgrades that um that we we're really going to lean on transportation. And you guys definitely need all the tools um uh to get us to where we need to be in the future. Um so I'd like to make a a motion to approve. Ten D.
Do I hear a second?
Got a quick question.
Sure.
Uh the pioneer contractors, are are they a union company, do you know?
Yes, they are.
Awesome.
Trustee Flores.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent, vice president Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arvob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
Motion passes four yes with one absent.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, there's one more action item to vote on, but don't leave quite yet, cause they might have questions, you never know.
Okay, no worries.
So we asked the board to approve action item ten E, which is the Silicon Valley pay paving contract.
Do I hear a motion? Vice president Amboy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve action item ten E.
Trustee Hodges.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Got a question, is this a union shop?
Yes, all of the, all of the contractors and subcontractors that we use are all union, it's a requirement.
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Young is absent, vice president Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arvob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
Thank you, we're now down to item ten F.
Thank you, guys.
You, we're gonna start our public hearing.
Good evening, president Fox and trustees, uh do you wanna open the public meeting?
Just did.
Wonderful, thank you, I'm thrilled to be here this evening with VEA bargaining chair Marnay McKenzie. And VEA president Kevin Steele to announce our joint efforts in review of the VCUSD collective bargaining agreement. Uh with the Vallejo Education Association. Consistent with the relevant provisions of the Educational Employment Relations Act, or EERA. Government code section three five four O at SEC, including section three five four seven of the government code. The Vallejo City Unified School District sunshines the following initial proposals for a successor collective bargaining agreement. With the Vallejo Education Association.
Good evening, everyone, um the Vallejo Education Association members believe our students deserve the best. VEA intends to commence successor agree negotiations for the contract, which expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. With specific proposals that attract and retain quality teachers, so our students have a great teacher in every classroom. Our proposals shall include improvements and clarification of the following.
We will be exploring article three wages, article six, health and welfare benefits, article eleven, procedures for evaluation of unit members.
And article five hours and article ten, class size.
Thank you. Thank you, are there any um public comments on this? Board, do you have any questions or comments, trustee Flores, your lights on? With no comments or questions, I'm closing the hearing and we'll need a motion for approval. Trustee Flores.
Make a motion for approval of item ten F.
Vice president Amboy.
I second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young is absent, tr- uh vice president Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arvob.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
Motion passes four yes and one absent.
Thank you. We are now down to reports, superintendent report.
Yeah, good evening, trustees, staff, students and members of the Vallejo community. So I wanna begin tonight by acknowledging the dedicated work of our executive team and our governing board during last week's first board study session. On the equity impact analysis, together we dug deeply into the details, asked difficult questions and began the important process of examining every. Imaginable factor to ensure that when the time comes on December seventeenth, the board has the complete information needed to make thoughtful. And informed decisions for the future of VCUSD, these decisions are never easy. But they are essential to building a stronger and more sustainable school system for our students. This was mentioned by our students earlier this weekend, I'm looking forward to a favorite Vallejo tradition, which is the superintendent's cup or JV football contest. Between Vallejo High School and Jesse Bethel High School, and I'm not picking a favorite, I will have to wear like blue, I think. I can't wear pink, I can't ti- pick a side. Alright, okay, maybe I'll wear pink then. And then our varsity team will also face off in the mayor's cup, so Vallejo High. Where Vallejo High School looks to defend the title, I believe that Vallejo High won that last year. Uh these spirited contests bring our schools and community together in pride and celebration of our students, it also is an alumni celebration, I believe. There's gonna be an alumni event at the game. Uh lastly, I mentioned this earlier, I wanna recognize the work of the student trustees and the newly formed superintendent student advisory council. Which met for the first time earlier this week, their voices and perspectives are central to our efforts to elevate student voice. And ensure that students are active partners in shaping the future of education in Vallejo. We are committed to creating more opportunities like this to engage our students directly, as we pursue our goal of improving outcomes for every Vallejo student. And that is my report this evening.
Thank you, any questions? Now we're on to board reports, thank you superintendent Aurelio. Like to start? Trustee Hodges.
I have no report.
Alright, trustee Flores.
Just a couple things to report on, um just to echo on the superintendent Aurelio's. You know, participated in the uh in that workshop the other day, it was good work, I think that we as a board did and. Doing our best in regards to the situation, uh the other thing I wanna report on was I was able to attend. Lunch on the lawn at my son's school, so that's always a fun experience and, you know, watching all the parents and all the kids. You know, just running around doing their thing and the good stuff, it's the good stuff that our district's all about, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you, vice president Amboy.
Uh I I attended the um two by two with John uh um last week. Uh I'll definitely let John next um report on what we've discussed um. Discuss there, um again, just to also reiterate on the breast cancer awareness month, um. My mom was diagnosed with breast cancer uh earlier last year, um and she is in remission. And I've been dealing with that and a few other things as well, but it's um it's things to be conscious about. Um as also, just keep in mind that um COVID and flu vaccines are available, so definitely. Protect yourselves and hopefully no one doesn't get sick, that's my report.
Thank you, vice president Amboy. Like trustee um Jacobo said, and now vice president Amboy. I will share also, just this last two years, my aunt has gone through high stage breast cancer, where she had a full mastect- full mastectomy and reconstruction. And reconstruction surgery, so it's been very scary, and I'm hoping she stays in remission. So it's a very, it hits a lot of us, our families, and um, so I'm glad that we did the resolution and that we're promoting awareness. And prevention the best we can. Um, with that, for the report, like Trusty, um, our Vice President Amboy said, for the two by two that we met last Thursday. A lot of things were being discussed, um, it was nice that the the police, um, their report update. They're doing a lot of recruitment, and they're trying to add at least one traffic officer here in Vallejo. Um, in three years, they're hoping to get full staffed, which is good, cuz we've been understaffed for many, many years. BRD is gonna be doing a Halloween event coming up, and they'll have information of that on their website. Um, starting October seventh, the bridge here on Mare Island will just be one way. It'll be one way in the west direction, and if you, to leave the island, you must go on thirty seven to go east. So again, to get here, you can come west, but to go, leave the island, you must go thirty seven, starting on October seventh. Um, Prop sixty four, Prop sixty four has um a lot of money they can go to prevention for um drug awareness. And um, right now, there's prevention and activity, money's going towards Vallejo High School. And I would like to see a lot more hopefully go towards a lot of prevention activity or talks at all of our high schools. Youth delegate, the youth delegate this year will be um. What city? I can't remember.
Salt Lake.
Salt Lake City, yes, and that's gonna be in November, coming next month already. Um, yes, Salt Lake City. All right, let's see, what else do we have? One thing where I was asking also for the city to look for, um, to try to find ways since the government, we're be cut, food programs are gonna be cut in the near future. So just looking at ways to make sure all of our families have enough food, especially our students for breakfast, lunch. Since some receive a lot of their food during the school day. So I'm hoping we'll find ways being proactive going forward with cuts that are gonna be made um in the next coming months or year. I think that's pretty much from the. By two. Oh, it was wonderful introducing our three student trustees um to the city. The mayor was very excited, and like she's come and talked to you, and you in your classrooms or at all of your schools. And promoted being involved here in Vallejo, which is wonderful. And I love that the Mayor's Cup is coming up too with our football team, so just how inner engaged she is with our schools. Thank you for all being there and giving your reports and being active with the city council and the school district. Promoting our Vallejo City Unified School District. And I just, I love that, and thank you so much, I appreciate all of your time. With that, that is a report for the two by two. And the other item, I'm hoping still November, I wanna say it's the tenth. That we'll have the second movie night for our reading, The Right to Read. The second one will be, help me with the name, I'm forgetting, um, The Follow Up. Monday the tenth, I'm hoping.
I don't know.
Hopeville, Hopeville is the follow up to The Right to Read. So I'm hoping that movie will be um screened that night, and trustees, I'll let you know as well, since. The next day, though, is a holiday, Veterans Day, so you won't have to go to school the next day, so, but you will be invited, so I'm hoping still to confirm. That we will be have, will have that movie to watch on the follow up for reading. And that is with my report. Now, let's see, Community Forum, we have one card, Trusty Orelio.
Uh, Tasha Johnson.
I mean Superintendent Orelio.
Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, everyone, lots of new faces. Lots of old faces. Um, I wanted to address the board um today, and my name is Tasha Johnson. I am Director, Partnerships and External Affairs for Lee Public Schools. And I am here tonight to ask the board about a letter that was sent over to all of you in regards to um. The Prop Two money. Um, and there is a response and some paperwork that is required by your superintendent. Um, that we are waiting for. And I'm just here to kind of temperature check, I guess, for the lack of better words. On when we might be able to expect to receive this information, as it is time sensitive. Um, and I think there was some, maybe some misunderstanding in the beginning when we applied, that maybe we weren't quite qualified for it. But I think that that has changed drastically. So, moving forward to where we are currently with the October fifteenth test scores coming out. I'd like to know when we can expect to receive the paperwork. And who actually is the holdup, is it the board, or is it the superintendent?
Are you done with your comments?
Yes.
We do not respond to public comments, we only listen.
Oh, okay.
Any other cards?
That's all the cards.
Thank you. Announcements of upcoming meetings.
Okay, our next. Oh, that's passed, sorry, Superintendent Advisory, yeah, sorry, no worries. October fifteenth is our next regular and, that evening is a regular governing board meeting, but it also is a, our next board study session. So it's a joint meeting that evening, and then October twentieth is our next town hall session. Um, we're working on the location, um, tentatively, it is at Vallejo High School, but we're verifying that the equipment in the. Uh, theater is ready to go, we might have to pivot to a different location if it's not ready for prime time. Um, and then I believe the next two by two, Trusty Fo- President Fox, October twenty third.
The mayor said you might need to move that date.
Okay, okay.
We're still, that could be tentative.
Okay, perfect. Those are our upcoming meetings.
All right, future board agenda items. Trusty Flores?
My apologies, this isn't a future board agenda, but I forgot to mention that this Saturday is Vallejo Waterfront Weekend. It's the big event that happens yearly. Um, one of the things I wanna highlight is the Paint the Waterfront Run. We're having a kids' run, or they're having a kids' run, which is, I believe, a one K. And that starts at eight thirty, and the five K for uh older, older folks is, starts at nine AM. Ten dollars registration for ages three to twelve, thirteen and over, twenty five dollars, family of four sixty. Um, they're saying wear a white shirt, because they're gonna have the color powder that they're gonna be tossing into the air, so you'll get to be nice and uh. Colorful when you show up to the Mayor's Cup later that afternoon. But uh, it's just a fun event, so far as the runs and the Vallejo Waterfront Weekend itself is just a, a, a longstanding tradition here, and I just wanted to mention that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Vice President Amboy?
Uh, I still want to um get a little bit more information on the Area Threes on Melrose. Um, if we can have that presented or, um, thank you.
All right, no other items, is there anything else for the go of the order? With that.